The meeting. And we're being recorded. Okay. So call it being to order, roll call. Again, Kim, the council is here with exception of Scott McPhee, who will be coming in five or 10 minutes at the very latest.
Got it, thank you.
Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda? If not, let's talk about the consent agenda. We have two meeting minutes.
Mayor.
Yes.
We do have one change. Albany Fire's quarterly report is next month. It will not be this month.
Yeah, I was going to talk about that. Forgot to. Right, that's a July topic. Thank you. Okay, consent agenda. Could I have a motion to approve or are there questions or concerns?
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thanks, John. Motion from John. Second from Scott. Any other questions? If not, please vote by raising your yes and no votes. To be four of us total. I've got three.
I'm struggling to get mine up. Where do I? Figure out where.
Right now.
I clicked on participant.
Mine's not showing participants today.
Oh.
Scroll down. Counselor, if you take your mouse and scroll down towards the bottom, it should pop up the other bar there at the bottom and show participants chat share screen.
There we go. Got it.
All right, four votes. Thank you. We keep motion carried. Moving quickly on to guest presentations. I see we have Captain Michelle here, Captain from the sheriff's office.
That's me. You guys, I'm gonna tell Beth that you guys miss her, but. So for the month of May, we had 10 traffic citations, 15 warnings, three adults were arrested, a total of 177 complaints and 163 and change hours spent in Millersburg of the 153 hour contract. Couple of things to note, we did have a few car break-ins. Most of them were vehicles that were left unlocked. Which typically the case. I think we did have one vehicle at a business that did have a window broken, so sometimes that does happen too. We had our animal control. Person was very busy, it looks like, in Millersburg checking the park on Alexander. And that general area, because I think we've got some complaints there. We also checked on a couple of vehicles throughout the report that we got some complaints of. It was in their driveway, but they were blocking the sidewalk and hanging out in or hanging out into the sidewalk, so they were given some warnings on those. We had one elude of a vehicle that.
Can we get everybody to mute their phones, please, or are not engaged in discussion?
They were at, driving carelessly in the parking lot at Loves and took off once the deputy tried to contact them. The male was not located at this time. We did have another report at Loves that involved a female. You know, she was acting pretty erratically. So she was arrested and charged with aggravated harassment. That was on the 13th. Also attempted escape. She spit on people's faces that were there at the truck stop, including one of our deputies, and was taken into custody. We had one burglary of a residence. But we're not exactly sure when that happened, because the person was out of state for an extended amount of time and came back and found some items in their, in their home taken. And on the 22nd, we had another burglary that had a male enter the property and spread. It wasn't really, didn't sound like he took much, but just kind of spread trash around from the dumpster around the parking lot and then tampered with some valves on a, on a tank. I don't know if it was like maliciously so, or who knows what they were doing. Also on the 22nd, we took another theft from a vehicle on Clearwater. Where several tools were taken from the vehicle. On the 23rd, we had another theft from a vehicle. That one had some damage on the interior as well as a couple items taken. And then on the 24th, we had a burglary where a mountain bike was taken from the caller's garage door that had been left open. So kind of similar to when cars get left open. Like I said, they had been checking the park for dogs off fleet. And they, on the 28th, they had, this was the one where the the window was actually broken. And some items were taken out of the vehicle that had been parked at Trade Winds overnight. They also on the 28th rested a male for shoplifting at Loves. Both of the report, just some, you know, minor to the person that has them, but you know, some car break-ins have been something we've been actually throughout the county kind of increase. We've arrested some people on some of them, but obviously there's probably more people. So. Any questions?
Anything from Michelle? Counsel?
It's good. Thank you for your service.
You bet.
Well, I'm still. People are trying to hear me say this, but I'm still concerned about the amount of hours and the cost of those hours and and what's going on in the, I said Loves area over time, and I'm still concerned about it. But I'll talk some more with Kevin later. See what we might do. Yeah, there's a call, for example, to the sheriff's office because somebody was working on their truck and it gets against Loves policy for them to work on the truck without using their services. To me, that's not a law enforcement call. That's an internal go make it, go talk to your customer call. If that's the, if that's what's, if that kind of thinking is behind all the calls can reach us, I have a concern about the imposing those costs on us. Bottom line, so.
Yeah, I saw that too, Mayor. It, it's a good point, I think you bring up. So it's worth, worth probably, you know, paying attention and making follow-up if needed.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I do think that that call in particular was a little bit isolated. Usually if they're, if Loves themselves are calling us, it's been because of either some kind of disturbance there or someone has stolen something from their store. But.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from Michelle?
What's that?
All right, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Moving on to public hearings. We have a number of items for I'm not sure they're all public hearings. These are basically action items. We do have three items regarding public hearing. We had, we already had a public hearings on these. But we make, we have motions now on three items relative to our financials and our budget.
Mayor. No, we do need to, we do need to open a public hearing for the state, to receive the state revenue sharings and then for the budget one final time.
All right, well, okay. So but the budget as well?
Yes.
Okay, so.
By the council.
All right, so you do three separate budget hearings or one, I mean, three separate hearings and one hearing for all three?
You can do the, the, the two, I believe you can do together. Forrest, correct me, but I think you could do a hearing to receive the state air revenue funds and the adoption of the budget.
You're correct. Those will just be separate motions, but you may do the hearing together.
Okay, so we'll do the three hearings together, three items together in the one hearing. Two, two and one on one on the other, okay.
So.
Were you preparing to show slides on this or what's your process thought on this?
The, the slide that you have.
Maybe.
Go ahead, Forrest.
So you, so item number one, or A, the state sharing revenue funds and six, the fiscal year 2021-22 budget, maybe one combined hearing. That one then needs to be closed and then you may then take action on that. The third one, the proposed lease to city-owned property, needs to be its own separate hearing. That may not be included in with the first two subjects.
So the lease prep is also an actual hearing as well, then?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I should have, I should have brought that up prior to the meeting. Sorry about that, folks. Okay, so the first public hearing will deal with I'm gonna open a public hearing regarding revenue sharing, election to receive state sharing revenue funds and our 21-22 budget. All of which have been extensively discussed during budget hearings with budget meetings, I'm sorry, and so forth, and we're prepared now to take action like pending results of the hearings. So what the process will be is staff will go through each item I, which we had on the screen here a minute ago for the are you, are you going to discuss each of the three items individually? Or are we just gonna open up a discussion?
So the first one, you just need to open a public hearing for the option to receive the state revenue sharing funds. It gives an opportunity for the public to do anything. If there's no questions, we can close it and then you can vote on the resolution.
But you're not gonna throw, not gonna put a doc on it to review or anything like that?
Correct.
Okay, so with that in mind, we'll go ahead and open a discussion, open hearing on the eligibility to receive state funding, state sharing revenue funds. Any input from anybody in the audience on this topic? Any questions from counsel on this topic? Hearing that, I'm gonna close the hearing on this specific topic of state revenue sharing. Moving on to the item of state sharing of revenue funds, open the hearing for that as well. Any comments from public? Any comments from counsel? Okay, I'm gonna close the hearing on that. With that in mind, then I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion to approve state, state sharing revenue funds. Which. Go ahead, John.
I move to approve resolutions 2021-10 and 2021-11 certification and election for the city of Millersburg to receive shared revenue funds.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or concern on those? If not, boys, please go ahead and vote. We have all five voting in favor, so that's carried. Thank you. Moving on to the 2021-22 budget. Resolution 2112, I'm opening a public hearing on the budget for next year, this fiscal year. Any comments from public? Questions or concerns? Any questions or concerns from the council?
Yeah, I've got. I've got one, Jim.
I'm sorry?
I've got one.
Okay.
So it came in at perfect timing here. Sorry about that. I had to go from the executive session down to my office here so I could have this meeting, so. Perfect, perfect timing in. So on the fiscal year 21-22 budget, my concern is, we talked about it during the budget committee, but it's gonna be the donation portion of, of the budget. One of the items on there is I think we approved $5,000 going to the Boys and Girls Club, which what they asked for was 7,500, but they gave us four items to, that we can donate towards. 2,500 would be towards the the, in the parks summer program that they do out of the city of Millersburg Park. I'm assuming we would stick 25 towards that. The other 2,500, though, would have to go towards the items that they gave us was like Hoop, Hoop Jam, which is in Albany. I believe the other one was a soccer, the soccer program that they have there at the Boys and Girls Club. Both of those really, to me, don't, it's, it's hard for me to quantify how that serves the city of Millersburg, not saying it doesn't. I think the Boys and Girls Club's a great organization. I actually spoke with Johnny Anderson on this. Him and I have had a lot of conversations about this in the past years. So, and the one thing he talked about was the Boys and Girls Club would actually be interested in that additional 2,500 going towards doing an eight-week program out at the park. They would not necessarily be able to do that this year, but for next year, they could, they could definitely look at that. So I would say that we take that 2,500, the additional 2,500, and we put it towards the, a eight-week program. I'm knowing it's not gonna come this year, but there's gonna be administrative costs. And I would also, I mean, on a, on a budget note, but since I'm talking about it, is also look at, because now we have a parks commission looking at instead of maybe for future budgets, instead of calling it a donation, we would actually put that funding towards the Parks Commission and then let them work with the Boys and Girls Club on what those programs are. Maybe put it towards their budget. So it's not really a donation at that point. We're actually purchasing a service for it.
Okay, so Scott, I guess a question would be, that seems kind of like a no-brainer, but does that really impact the budget? Can we not approve the budget as it is and still work that?
Well, okay, sorry. So that was going through that, because that was my original problem with, one of my problems with the budget. The other issue with the budget was the donation to the Arden Air Festival that we have on there and the Lynn County Fair. Not saying I don't personally support those programs or, or those events. I actually think they're great and I'm glad we have them. But as far as putting tax funds towards those, I, I don't agree with that because I don't, I don't see what service that we get from that or how we can quantify why we're spending 2,500, 100 there towards each of those. So those would be two issues that I had, I had with it.
Okay. In hindsight, I actually agree with you on the fair. If we're the only city and the county contributing, and I think that might be the case, but I failed to ask the question. So I don't know.
We've asked that before and the answer was yes. So except for Albany with their transient tax, give some money out of their transient tax towards it. Which, which makes sense. It's within their city. Obviously transient tax has to be used towards, towards something like that, so.
Does counsel wish to make any changes as a, as a result of Scott's comments for the budget?
It would require a motion in a second for the, for the council to do that. You can.
Well, no, but I'm asking the question first to see if there's any reason to pursue a motion. And I'm here, I am not hearing anything at this point.
I, so I wasn't at the last budget committee meeting, so I don't have a, a ton of, I would like to have been there to hear the discussion. But in my mind, we developed a procedure to go through on, on things like this. And there was a checklist, right? So what was, I mean, is that being utilized? Because yeah, I agree with Scott. I mean, I don't want to be the only city donating money for no apparent service or direct service to our community, just because. But if I remember correctly, we did come up with a system on, or a checklist that we go through, make sure it's a qualifies for the city and what we intend for money the city spends to do for the residents of the city and the community. So, I mean, I just want to make sure that we're using that.
That, that was, Counselor, that was, was reviewed. And there was quite, quite a bit of discussion as we have seen in the past, and I believe the vote was nine-one to propose what was in that.
It got, it got.
That was in the first meeting, not the second meeting.
It, you're right, it was used. I think it got kind of mushy when we started to analyze actual direct benefit to this, to the residents of Millersburg. When we can't, we can't say it was some level of accuracy that both the Art and Air Festival and the fair does in fact impact and support our city. But you can argue that point as well. It is, well, okay, but does it really support, you know, validate using tax dollars for that? So that's the question I've been to John, that Scott has continually pushed back on and we on the Art and Air Festival, we said, well, we'd agree with it if we asked the event committee to work that, I think, correct me if I'm wrong here, but as David said, we'd let the events committee determine how to spend that 2,500, whether it was and whether or not it went to Art and Air Festival, but it's all how it went to Art and Air Festival. So we kept that, that's kind of a loosey-goosey thing as well.
Yeah, and you did discuss moving that. Just now just highlighted, so you can see, we had a note there, discussed next budget. Moving those funds over and asking the celebration committee to make that. These funds would be for, this would be for the Art and Air Festival and the county fair. Just a reminder, the funds that are in here would be for next year. So we'd already committed last year to this year's. And still haven't heard for sure whether both are still going on. I haven't heard they've canceled them.
You know, I've kind of changed my, and Scott has not influenced me personally in this, by the way, but I have kind of changed my mind a bit over the last couple of weeks about this. I think we're kind of weak on our support of these two items with taxpayer dollars. I think yes, it's a nice thing to do to support, support, support other agents. It feels good. It's the right thing to do and so forth, but it's really the right place to spend our taxpayer dollars. We really authorized to do that in their name. I'd be willing to back off both the fair and the Art and Air Festival to stage. I, I think, you know, we talked about the Art and Air Festival supporting Millersburg. Yeah, they, they wanted to help us by loaning us some equipment. At one time, it didn't happen because we had a conflict. That was, that was a gesture, not an actual fact. It was good gesture and we'd like to have that relationship of Albany, but it never really happened. And they did give us a booth, our space for a booth at the Art and Air Festival. That's not really a big ticket item. You just had a space to do a real thing with the city of Millersburg. So I, I would take my neck out here and I would entertain personally a motion to remove support for both those areas. That's just me saying, talking to, that's probably surprise of some of you, including staff, but it, that's kind of, I, if thinking about it less of a week, I'm thinking that was really the wrong move.
If, okay.
Please.
You up in here? I, I couldn't agree more. Again, after thinking about this and what it looks like and how, how we're spending the money versus how it helps the community. But I don't know if I'd scratch it if you got those kind of votes. I would like to see it moved to the committee, the, either Parks Committee or the Celebration. Because that, I can directly reflect us, right? So that's just my two cents.
Mayor, could I make a suggestion?
Please.
I don't believe there's anything keeping counsel from coming back and re, reconsidering this, where those funds go. But I believe if we just were to subtract those right now, we would need to republish our notification in the paper if we were to reduce our budget by 5,000. So I think if counsel wants to come back and readdress this, you can readdress that just under the budget. I would recommend if, if you're comfortable with that, rather than saying we're gonna withdraw this, if you're gonna take those funds out and not keep them. Otherwise, we would have to republish and show that $5,000 decrease. But I think you can come back later. You can approve the budget and we can move those items later.
Well, this did not show up in the paper. The paper only has a one-page summary. It's not in any, nowhere near this detail. Of course, the numbers are rolled up into that summary. I understand that.
Right, that's all I'm, all as I'm saying, as far as the budget, if you approve the budget, then we can look at where you would want to reassign those funds. If you decide you don't want to continue support to those two.
You could even move it into the miscellaneous category here.
Miscellaneous or anywhere.
As long as you didn't change the total number.
Oh.
But as far as the budget, if we, if you say we want to subtract that, then we have to readjust our budget.
So you would prefer we do that at another meeting?
Well, you can direct us to it, to it now, but I'm just saying, as far as adopting the budget, let's say you want, you know, we need to keep, if you keep it as an expenditure, then we don't have to come in and, and adjust and republish.
But we can move it.
We can move it, yes, at any point.
So we can move it and not spend it too?
Oh. So really, all you, tonight, alls we need to do is just adopt, adopt the budget. We can come back and, and make those other adjustments. If you, if you need to try and have further discussion on it, you can do that as well. Or just directly, otherwise.
Counsel, are you okay with that? Any concerns?
I'd be okay with that.
Well, this count, I, I certainly don't want to go back out. We need to probably approve this budget. It's June. So unless we're gonna have another meeting later this month. I do know also, this has been talked about many times and I'm open to ideas. I support the fair and I support the air and art and I, I don't really see it. I don't see the conflict as, as some of the counselors do with maybe giving monies to that. I think, you know, you, you might not be able to put a finger on it, but it, it does add revenue or desire to the citizens of Millersburg. And it's very low cost to, to support. And so I just don't see that angle, but I'm willing to explore that. Maybe, you know, if, if moving those funds to a, to the celebration committee would be a an accommodation to make counsel feel comfortable, I'd be open to that. But I'm, I'm not, I, I do believe, I feel that we need to approve this budget as is. It was looked at. We spent two work sessions on that and this was voted on as already indicated nine to one.
And as I said, and I just want to point out, counsel does have the ultimate, ultimate say. I mean, you, you have your budget committee as a committee that's recommending to, to counsel, so you can come back and direct us, say, hey, you know, if you have, counsel can take an action later. And, and direct us otherwise on that community support. Later in this meeting or at a subsequent meeting, either way.
So recommendations, recommendations, we approved budget ad is, assuming there's no other issues that come up here and revisit it at a different point. Keeping in mind this, these expenditures aren't until late next year or this time next year.
Correct.
So they'd be okay with that? Scott?
Yeah, I say we move them into the miscellaneous fund, just, just, just to make it sweet and easy and then we can talk about it on each one. Or if we want to move it to celebration, because they're purchasing a service with it, like the stage or whatever they're getting the benefit. So I'd be all right with it if we just moved it to the miscellaneous. That way, we don't, we don't change the numbers. We still have the money there. We can, we can do, do what we want later. So with it.
I, I would agree and we can hash it out later.
Yeah, and then get, get them in, involved to, you know, let them bring some feedback, right? But let the celebration committee weigh in. Maybe Parks Commission has something that we haven't even thought of yet, so as they get rolling.
Scott, how about making a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the budget with the changes of the Lynn County Fair and Expo and the Northwest Arden Air Festival. Moving those funds to the miscellaneous line item under community support.
Go ahead and show that.
Kevin, Janelle, you okay with that, the way it's written, stated?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're changing it now, so.
All right. All right, any further discussion? If not, please go ahead and vote. I'm missing one.
I know, I'm having a heck of a time tonight for some reason.
Just say yes. Just say yes.
Yes. Oh, there, there we go. Yes.
All right, motion carried. Thank you so much.
Too many meetings, right?
Moving on, Dan, we now have, uh, a hearing for the lease, proposed lease of the city-owned property on the west side of the tracks. So I'm going to open a hearing, but I want to ask staff to give us a bit of an overview for the benefit of those, benefit of those in the audience. Kevin, you want to?
Sure.
Will you plan on doing a quick overview?
Yeah. So as, as you can see here on, uh, January twenty-eighth of twenty-one of this year, the city entered into a letter of intent for at least approximately twenty acres of land with Wilbur Ellis Company LLC. Um, this property is, is on city property that is located on the west side of, of the Burlington Northern Portland and Western Railroad tracks on parcels that the city owns. And we have, um, had advertised for leased. It's industrial, industrial zone property. Uh, we're now requesting, uh, council directed us to, to work on the lease. We're now requesting approval of the proposed lease agreement for approximately twenty-five acres. Uh, proposed terms of the lease include an initial term of eighteen months for due diligence period. Uh, during this initial term, Wilbur Ellis has a right to terminate the lease with, with a thirty-day notice. During that period, they'll reimburse the city a hundred dollars per acre. Uh, once they make a determination, then they, they enter into the operational, um, uh, uh, either at the completion of that or if, when they elect to go into the operational period, we'd be leasing that at five hundred dollars an acre uh, per month to them. And add up prior to the completion of the initial term, Wilbur Ellis has an option to enter in to that thirty-year lease followed by two ten-year renewal periods. Any questions? And I would just point out, uh, council, we did send, um, an updated lease agreement for, um, that you received earlier today with some, uh, language, proposed language change for, um, exhibit B. Is that right, Forrest? Which determines the, um, which would, would not occur until they, during, as part of the due diligence, they will be entering, um, they'll be completing information that we need for describing the meets and bounds, um, to that. So there was some language that was addressed, uh, for that.
This is, this is the thing we received mid-afternoon today, right?
Yes. So, uh, what you receive, what initially came out, we didn't have information on exhibit B or C, and those of you have that, that information now.
Okay. Okay. So for the benefit of anybody who may have questions, we do have executives from the Wilbur Ellis on, online here with us tonight. So entertain any questions, uh, or comments regarding, during this hearing from anybody?
And Forrest?
Yes.
Um, did we also, I was trying to remember, did this also include, um, making a determination? We did that, uh, that the property is available.
Oh, yes, yes. The property is available for lease. It's going to be in the best interest, and that's actually within the actual ordinance. But staff is recommending, within the ordinance that will be voted on, that, uh, you find, and, and staff is recommending that the property is available. It's going to be in the best interest for the city of Millersburg as well as the residents. I have that language though in the proposed ordinance, but good catch, Kevin.
I've not heard questions from, from community. Any additional comments or questions from council? Hearing, no questions or comments from anybody. I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. And before, I'm going to seek a, a motion to approve. Any comments to council one more time before we do that? If not, can I get somebody to please, uh, I guess we have a suggestion motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Janelle provides a suggestion motion. If somebody would be so kind to make that motion, appreciate it.
I, uh, moved to approve an order authorizing the lease of approximately twenty-five acres of city of Millersburg, Oregon, real property known as Tax Lot Two Zero Three of Lynn County, Assessor Map Ten South, Range Three West, Section Twenty-nine. The parent parcel to Wilbur Ellis Company LLC, a California limited liability company, and further authorizing the city manager to sign all documents on behalf of the city of Millersburg necessary to convey said property via lease to Wilbur Ellis Company LLC, a California limited liability company, and to conduct business and sign documents necessary to implement and fulfill terms of this lease in the future.
And mayor, if I may, may I ask Mr. Harms or Councilor Harms to also add this sentence? That the said property is not needed for public use within the period of the lease. Will you entertain adding in addition to that, that the said property is not needed for public use within the period of the lease?
So moved.
Or so added, I guess. Thank you.
Okay, Kim and Janelle, do you have that?
Yes, they have it.
Okay, good. Okay, and Scott, would you give a second, provide a second?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, please. Motion has carried. We're done with that one. Thank you so much for the, to the folks from Wilbur, Wilbur Ellis, who joined us tonight online and our meeting today as well.
Uh, mayor, may I? May I add some follow-up with this, please? And so, uh, so Kevin, the order is available for your signature. It should be out there. If you want to coordinate signing of that with Eric Jenks, and I know Eric's on the line. Uh, we can get that done. You can even sign it tonight or tomorrow and get it up to Eric and get that signed as well on his behalf. And then, uh, we should be good. Eric, are you, do you have any questions regarding that?
No, I don't. Thank you. Um, and thank you for the, uh, council's action.
And Kevin, will you, will you be able to take care of that, Kevin, on getting that signed and get it up to Eric? Or you can either route it to me and get it to him, or you can do it directly. Any questions on that?
Mayor, did you close the public hearing?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Good. And I guess my final, final, the final comment would be I'd like to welcome Wilbur Ellis to Millersburg.
Well, thank you. We look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Sorry it's taken so many years to get here. Okay. All right, moving on. Any, uh, council or staff member comments? Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm missing public comment. It's not even on my agenda, but it should be. Am I correct about that?
Yes, it's, I just realized it's not on there. We have it on the, uh, I have it, it got missed.
I'm using the printed copy. I'm trying to make it here. So let me back up a moment. Now, I asked a question now again, is there, are there any members of the public who'd like to draft the council? We really welcome that. Kevin, Lori, Ron. I can see most of you here.
Uh, we're good.
Okay. All right, moving on then to council or staff comments. Anything there?
Mayor, this is.
City manager report.
Hey, Mayor. It's Cowan.
I'm sorry, Scott.
All right. Yeah, is this a good time just to maybe give an update on the celebration committee and that?
Yes, I would really appreciate. I was going to ask you to do that. I forgot about it. So yes, please do.
That's all right. So we had our meeting and, uh, still moving forward with the plan on, uh, doing a celebration on, um, on, uh, September eleventh. Uh, it's looking at a, um, doing a parade, a five-k run in the morning, a parade, uh, maybe a scavenger hunt of some sort. There's still some details to be worked out on that. And then a car show. Um, and, uh, those are the activities that we're looking at doing, that that committee is looking at doing on September eleventh. And, um, I think I'll be reaching out to, um, Jenny and, uh, maybe actually having something to present, maybe at her next council, maybe that she can move forward with, uh, so you guys can, uh, hear her and, uh, and get maybe a little bit more detail, but they're still working on that and that's the plan right now. Any, any questions from council?
I, just one, I'm, I don't know to what degree you're talking to Kevin. You had on this, and I don't want to get in the way here, but when we talk about the five-k run and scavenger hunts, to any degree at all that you might need staff support for that, might start talking to them about that and their prior experiences around it. Five-k run, buddy, of course, and the twenty-k. But I just, just invite you to make sure you talk to Kevin and Janelle about logistics along the way.
Uh, yeah, yeah, Mayor. Um, I think that, that, uh, good point and we, uh, I'll, I'll stress that. I don't think it's going to be at this point, but, um, I know that they are looking for volunteers. So if there's any, uh, members listening in, uh, of the community and listening that want to help out with the celebration, uh, do, uh, speak with staff and, um, and we're continuing looking for volunteers, but, uh, I'll relay that and see what, uh, if there is some needs from staff, um, for that event.
Great. Thanks for doing it. Okay, moving on, uh, last chance for council or staff comments if, if we missed you.
I'd say, I'd say one real quick, uh, just a good job to the, uh, staff and, uh, Forrest on putting together a solid lease agreement with the Wilbur Ellis.
Thank you.
Good point.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving from that into the management report.
Okay, the, uh, project updates. So I'm going to let Janelle go over the fire station and, uh, if you haven't seen, uh, lots of activity and we're going to see it really start to pick up here.
Uh, we'll post a couple of pictures in just a minute, although since it's on a main route, you've probably driven by and seen it. Um, so construction began in May, as you're all aware, with earthwork and preparation for the building pad and roadways, followed by road and utility work. There's a job site trailer there now. Um, the sign will be installed soon. I don't have an actual date and I need to ask again tomorrow, but I know the proof has been approved and we're just waiting for it to be printed. Um, that'll be a construction finding identifying what the project is. Uh, they're getting started on forming the building pad. Actually, I think tomorrow is when they're going to start forming. They've been doing under slab utilities. And we're anticipating that the foundation will be poured later this month. It's a, it's going to be one pour for all of it. So, because it's a mat slab foundation. So they'll be getting all prepared and ready to go for that, uh, big event.
And, and it will be, uh, it will be something. They're bringing in a company that will be doing it because it's all, if you remember, this is all finished concrete. It'll be polished, portions of it polished. So it's, uh, it's make sure you get it right the first time. And, uh, I think they have a lot of experience in that. And it sounds like a bringing in a, a company that has a lot of experience in, in doing that type of a, of a pour, but it'll be a, a big pour when they do it.
So this, this photo, you can see the temporary construction entrance, which is close to where the new road, is part of where the new road will be, but this is the fill that they're building up right now. And they're able to reuse the onset material, which is great. Uh, because it turned out to be very good material. Um, for that. And then you can see the underslab plumbing starting to go in.
And that was the truck sitting there with the forms that came in yesterday.
Any questions on the fire station?
Hi, Janelle. This is Kevin Hax. I do have one. Is there only one entrance to this or is there two entrances?
There is currently a new road being constructed. Um, and that is one entrance off of Old Salem Road for the new, the new road, which eventually we intend to extend on up and up to concert or, and/or continue through the industrial property. But at this point, it's going to just end at the edge of the fire station property. And then the entrance to the fire station itself from that new road. Um, the, the day doors will open toward the south and the parking lot entrance will be on the north side. So it'll have one public entrance, but two for the, uh, fire apparatus to go in and out.
Yeah, I just heard a lot of people had concerns about just one in and out with fire trucks coming in and out of one road and, uh, the congestion there. So, so that's why I was asking if there's going to be two entries where they can go in either on, off of concert or off of Old Salem. That's all.
Yeah. So the road, Kevin, the road going in there is, uh, it's an eighty-foot road, eighty-foot wide road. So it'll have center turn lane and two lanes of traffic and, and bike, and this place is.
There's a concern about, uh, Old Salem itself and getting out on Old Salem. It really won't be any different than what they're currently doing coming off of Concert on Old Salem.
Okay. So, uh, okay. Thank you.
And, and there are warning lights that will be up at Concert, but if they need to get out of there in an emergency, they'll have their full emergency lights on. Excuse me, on Old Salem, there will be warning lights that will flash when they're going out on emergencies.
Okay. All right. Great. Thanks.
I will say that, uh, while this is so far, we've had an excellent, uh, relation, working relationship with them to this point. Um, they are, uh, have been right on top of things and, uh, holding their subs accountable and things as well when we become aware, um, and making sure that they're getting things submitted right and correctly.
Couple more quick updates, just to let you know, um, on the MS four permit, which I can give more information on if anybody wants it, but for now I'll just leave it here. Um, we, we did reach a settlement with the Department of Environmental Quality and submitted an application for coverage under the revised permit on May twenty-first, and we got our permit issued on June second. So, um, we'll be moving forward with implementing that permit. And then Farmers Market, very brief update. It, the first one did take place on June third, and if you were there, you probably know even more about it, but, uh, the market organizer reported that it was a great success and ten of the thirteen vendors sold out of their products. So we're happy, they're excited to have the next one tomorrow.
And then according to, to her, the, the three that didn't are more specialized, um, where they wouldn't normally expect to develop a, uh, but, uh, it sounded like all the vendors were extremely pleased with the response and turnout.
That's it for the project update. Did you have something to add?
Am I missing some?
I thought there was something you were going to have, but I don't remember what it was.
Well, you got it. It was Farmers Market. We just want to.
Great.
Okay, anything else?
Not on that.
I just might add, you know, your comment about Farmers Market being over, overwhelmed, or maybe that's not the right word, but oversold, which means there's a ton of people there. And I guess observation personally is, I've been, been going to grandson's baseball games over there. Sometimes there are two games going on. There are many nights a week, hundreds of people in that park, which is really a neat thing to, to observe. So I just, we've come a long way in actually making that park, making it available and, and in good, better shape all as, as we go. And increased usage is, is really awesome. So.
I, I will just comment, we're probably seeing some higher usage of people coming as well. Um, I don't think Albany has opened their parts up to the degree that we have to, to, for usage.
There was a group, uh, Saturday, I believe it was, that had a very, very large group of people up in the northwest corner outside of the covered area, which was quite impressive, as, as well as baseball games going on. That park was really cool. Um, so it's nice to see those use. And yes, it was a, a, a large family event of some sort. So are we, I'm assuming that we're, are we providing permits for the children now also?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So I will just mention that. So the state has lifted the mask restrictions on outdoor, um, events. They expect June seventeenth to lift most other restrictions if we hit the seventy percent requirement for vaccinations statewide. Um, Lynn County is, is a ways away so, but it, it sounds like that, uh, we may reach that. There's targeting potentially June, June seventeenth. So what we're hearing is that most everything would be lifted. I'm not sure what, if, oh, what other additional restrictions may, may come into play, but at that point, that's where, where they are.
Does that mean we'll have meetings in person then?
I'm talking on topic. I'm sorry. Uh, how do you feel about giving us an update where your head is? How do you feel about this? An update where your head is regarding a potential in face, face-to-face meeting in July, given what you just said?
If, if they, if we have early enough to notice that and we can get, make sure everything is working, I would hope that maybe we can look at in person in July, August at the latest.
Okay. That'd be nice. Anything else, Kevin or Janelle?
Dude, I do have one other thing. We did get notification today. I received an email from county council. The ASA committee did forward the recommendations for the change to the ASA beginning July of next year, where Albany will pick up our ambulance, begin providing ambulance service to the whole of Millersburg. And he is planning on scheduling that going to the county commissioners for their final, final action. So I imagine the commissioners will hold a public hearing, I doubt they're any, and, and my expectation is that they will adopt that and issue the order that would, for that to take place effective July 1st of 2022. So a year from, from this coming July.
Thank you. Good work. Anything else?
And that's it under manager's report.
Okay. Forrest, did you have anything?
No.
City manager report? Okay. Moving on then to unfinished business. We have a, now we go into new business and we have a cost of living adjustment discussion.
Yes. So during budget, we talked about this. So a number of years ago, council adopted a policy that we would look at our annual cost of living. It's based on the January, the January changes, the consumer price index for all workers. This last year, that increase was 1.6%. We included that as we shared when we were going through the budget. We, we budgeted that for the, for a proposed cost of living increase for members effective July 1. But as council does have the option based on the policy to elect an amount lower or higher than the CPA at your discretion. And as I mentioned, the cost for that 1.6 increase was included in our 21, 22 budget for personnel. And if council is willing to consider that, we would ask for your currents on that and a motion to adopt that call for fiscal year 21, 22.
Counsel? Comments or a motion?
I'll motion, motion to approve. I moved to adopt a cost of living adjustment of 1.6% for fiscal year 2021, 22.
Second. Second.
Okay, thank you. Given where the rates are going currently, this is pretty low. We're talking 3% out there right now, right? Yeah. So, okay, any further discussion? Go ahead and vote, please. The motion is carried. Thank you. Adoption of capital improvement program, CIP.
Janelle, sorry about that.
All right. So the capital improvement program was presented at the budget committee meetings. There were some edits that we incorporated based on those meetings and it was been included in the document that was in your packet. No additional comments were received after the budget meeting. So if you're ready to adopt and there's a motion on your screen that's suggested.
Counsel?
I moved to adopt the 2021 to 2025 capital improvements program.
Second.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Please go ahead and vote. Motion carried. Thank you. I want everybody to realize what time it is. It's not 10:30. Okay, any closing public comment? Please, anybody? Closing council comment? I have one. On Saturday the 19th, there will be a letter patrol for Old Salem Road, starting at nine o'clock at City Hall at noon. You're all welcome to attend. So we've, actually, we've got done last time, just under three hours, because we had increased participation, but quite nicely. So that's a fun thing to do. Believe it or not.
Are you saying you want me to come by and throw some stuff out so you don't finish so early?
I'm saying good. I didn't hear what he said.
I said, are you, are you saying that you want me to come by and throw some stuff out so you don't finish so early?
No, 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 no. I tell you what, I tell you what's really disheartening though. You get all done and somebody goes by and spews litter all over the road right behind you.
I'm promising it's not me.
Okay. Anything else before we adjourn? Okay, recognized this is of record. Before 7:30 PM, we return the meeting. Thank you, everybody, for being here.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.